Right, good evening. I'd like to call the order. This study session of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors, Thursday, April 16, 2020. We have two items on the agenda this evening. 2.1 is our strategic plan update and 2.2 is the State Board of Education waiver process. And with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Good to be here. We're ready to present these two items. We're going to start with Dr. Garcia. He's going to talk about the strategic plan. And then Malik is also here, our attorney, and he will help me when I talk about the waiver, the emergency waiver. So, Dr. Garcia, you want to start?
Yes, thank you. And Tom, if we can go ahead and bring up the slides, slide deck, that would be great. Just a reminder that this is the strategic plan. We began this process really in the fall of 2019. And we are just getting ready to sunset our 2015 to 2020 strategic plan. The strategic plan is a board strategic plan. It is the board's way to identify goals and benchmarks of success for these Tacoma Public Schools. There's a lot of information here tonight, and so we'll go through it just step by step. And then we'll talk about next steps. Next slide, please, Tom. So just a little bit of milestones, looking back, we first began with 2010 with four visionary goals that we use to guide our work. And then in 2020, based on these goals, excuse me, that date's not accurate, 2012, based on those goals, we established for our first multiple measures success accountability system. And we really built on that work and learned as a community and as a school system, and we built dashboard system to monitor our results. In 2015, we revisited our benchmarks and we established a revised strategic plan and established priority benchmarks and targets for those goals. In 2019, we updated our data systems in our data warehouse and launched updated infrastructure to have reporting systems. All the way through this, language changes because state guidelines change, federal guidelines change, and so we try to stay as current as possible. But as I mentioned, we are right in the process of sunsetting the current strategic plan and expires technically, I think we've established June 30, 2020. In the fall of 2019, the board went through a formal process and they maintain and revise their current four goals and then added a fifth goal. Since that fall of 2019, we've been collecting staff and community feedback. And then, as we know, based on us not all being in the same room tonight, COVID-19 hit and closed our schools and much of our communities. Next slide, Tom, please. So tonight, we're going to build on our successes and give you some feedback of what we heard from our community and staff and families and even some students. Next slide. So who was invited to participate in this? All of our staff, all of our students, all of our families, all of our community partners were given an opportunity to participate, and we started with an online survey. Some examples that were, just wanted to highlight folks that also we reached out to and said, please take some time to do the survey. So we reached out to higher ed partners, community partners, and this is not a fully inclusive list, but gives you some samples of the different agencies and different partners that we look for specific guidance from, government partners, business community, state and national partners as well. And yes, there's some acronyms in there. WABs, Washington Alliance for Better Schools. NAS is the National Association for Superintendents of Schools. TAF is the Technology Access Foundation, and so on. Next slide, Tom. So just a reminder, the newly adopted academic excellence language, we changed and I tried to bold, well, I, we have a marvelous PIO team that helped put this presentation together and bedazzled it. So those bolded words are the changes from the last one. Next slide. And here's what we heard from that community feedback. And these are some draft recommendations that we are looking for some feedback from you tonight and that we would ultimately hopefully bring back for our first reading of adoption. We heard that we needed to replace the ninth grade failing a class one or more and really think about GPAs for our secondary students. What is the GPA for seventh graders, eighth graders, ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders? Because that was an indication of their preparation. We heard this from the higher ed field and some of our community partners, and so we're interested in that piece. Removing the re-engagement from dropout, continuing to monitor dropout, but we've learned that the re-engagement numbers are really skewed because a student can sometimes will leave school after they've dropped out. In the Willie Stewart Academy or some of our Fresh Start programs, and that same student may be removed from the books because of mandatory reporting after 20 or 25 days, and then they come back, but it's the same student. And so the real indicator is those graduation, extended graduation rates of five years, six years, seven years in there. We heard that it would be very important that we started to separate the VANNY out by four categories. So right now, we report students with a VANNY, verified acceptance to the next institution, but the community and staff said it would be great to know four-year, two-year apprentice and military. Feedback on moving SEL to the newly revised health and safety goal. Move extracurricular participation to health and safety. Align our rigor definition with the new state's definition. And then overall, a general satisfactory with the other benchmarks, and those would be remaining the same. Next slide, please. For the goal of partnership, there was no language in the actual goal that was recommended to change from the board, so this is the adopted goal. Next slide, please, Tom. And here's what we heard here. There was a desire to really focus in on the number of parents participating in the school climate survey and really looking at, are we capturing that language through our current benchmark way? And then shrinking down some of the partnership goals and looking at other areas where that data is collected. So removing the percentage of responses at each level for the community partner survey. So the school climate versus the community partner survey, the feedback was, there was some redundancy there. The number of expanded learning opportunities created with partner organizations, and you'll see later that that's really revised to the number of students participating in expanded learning opportunities. The number of business, higher education, institution, partner organizations, a district with donations, resources, and volunteers, captured as well in volunteers and different ways. But it didn't seem like that gathered as much support as this was the way to measure whether we have effective partnerships. As I mentioned, these are captured in some fashion in other benchmarks as well as other data, and then the other benchmarks in this category would remain the same. Next slide, please, Tom. Early learning, the current recommendations are no changes to the focus of the goal language. Next slide, please. Just a quick pause. How much fun is it to actually see kids in slides, right? We haven't been able to see kids in schools, but it's really fun to see them in the slides. So here's what we found out. There was a lot of, we need to do some real work on revising the kindergarten benchmark, WAAG kids to report card standards. When WAAG kids was first designed, it was never designed to be an accountability tool. It was designed to be a formative assessment and a way to engage families and teachers in where that child was to start. And so we're proposing that we bring you back a revised benchmark in that area that looks at data differently. And then the remaining benchmarks would remain the same. Next slide, please, Tom. We adopted a new goal or revised our safety goal to be the health and safety of students. So we will create and maintain healthy and safe learning environments that promote excellent academic achievement. Next slide, please. So in this area, as I mentioned, we would add annual school social emotional planning for all schools. So this would expand on the elementary work that we've done. So all schools would be required and we would monitor and report those. We would host a secondary extracurricular benchmark. This reflects the continued work in keeping students healthy. We would add an ELO benchmark. So the number of students at the elementary level that were participating in partner extended learning opportunities. And then the proposal is to remove the percentage of students with behaviors that result in state-reported actions and behaviors. We're not going to lose this. This is already reported at a state level, but it has several different variables that continually change. And we didn't feel like that was the reflection of the health and safety intent anymore. And then the other benchmarks would remain. Next slide, please, Tom. The board in the fall, as I mentioned, of 2019, adopted a new goal around operations and it was state, we will focus on effective and efficient business practices to ensure student academic success. Next slide. So there are five benchmarks that we are proposing in five categories for your consideration. One is information technology. So something along the lines of maintaining a low average age of devices. This is no more, very relevant now, right? And critical to ensuring students and staff have access to the latest technology required to complete their work and maintain their skills. This was actually, we were working on this before COVID-19, but it's very much relevant to what we see is the new way that we're going to have to approach. We want to bring you back a benchmark around fund balance, and we know we have a policy to maintain that, but we want to think about how do we keep that more visible and viable and as we move forward. In the human resources, we want to bring you benchmarks back around retention rates, if you're so inclined. Maintenance and operation is work order completion rates. And then food service, student meal participation rates. Next slide, Tom, please. So in the area of equity, we really talked about, so how are we going to be honest? Are we achieving our results and will we examine our disparities? So based on some of your feedback, we changed ethnicity to race. And then we really went in and started to look at our foster care numbers. And we're actually recommending that we do not use this as a filter. What we learned is the current N size is too small in many of the grade levels to filter this by any other factor. And so what we found is for hypothetically, in third grade, we might have 30 foster school or foster, foster care students in third grade across the district. But if we applied another filter, like how many of those students are Hispanic, that number would drop down to the N size too fast in the other variables, and we wouldn't be able to report that out. And so our recommendation is not to report that as part of the benchmarks to date. Next slide, please. So we wanted to get some feedback, but we have a tight timeline to think about. And so you'll notice that we very specifically didn't write the exact language for some of our recommendations because we needed to hear from you folks, are we on the right track? We know COVID has impacted our ability to have a lot of contact with folks, but folks even as late as today, principals were saying, hey, here's what I'm thinking lately about the benchmarks. So our proposal is to bring you back a first reading of the proposed benchmarks next week on April 23rd. And then a second reading at our next scheduled business meeting, which is May 14th, proposed. And then before I forget, I'd like to give a special thank you to our PIO office. Our PIO office really is marvelous at trying to engage people in several different fashions around ways to hear their feedback. And so, yes, we did have some limitations this spring. We made phone calls, we called partners, we put out surveys, we asked again and again multiple times. But they did a great job of collecting feedback, looking at trends, and helping us craft recommendations that we needed to hear from our community. Next slide, please, Tom. So the remaining, and we won't go through the appendix, is a glossary of terms and some other information for you folks, just as background knowledge, and will be posted online as well. Questions and comments, please.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Garcia. Vice President Cobb, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have several comments. And I don't have, I was trying to pull up the slides on my own to toggle back through, but I have a couple. So on the academic excellence benchmark, Mike, I like the addition of a greater, a broader focus on GPAs across the secondary grades, but I feel like it's like adding something good and taking something away that was also important. I'm trying to think about like the additions and recommendations, being mindful of community input, but also thinking about keeping a strong, like what does the research and evidence base tell us about some of the benchmarks that are important to keep an eye on? So I think that there's a fair amount of research around ninth graders not failing one of their core classes in ninth grade and the impacts, the signal that failing one of those core classes gives about their, whether or not they're on track. So I just wonder about the elimination of that benchmark rather than refining it maybe in the way that we define it. And in addition, I just, I understand on that benchmark and a couple others that there is other data and other places where this information shows up, but for the board, this is the key place where it shows up for us. We can ask questions about it. So I'm hesitant to see that ninth grader benchmark go away. And then on the partnerships benchmark, I just had a question about the recommendation for the number of parents. Just wonder, it feels sort of like the number of volunteers that we've been seeing in the past, and I just wonder, how will we think about what number is the right number? And do we know the number? Are we going to create some structure around it? Like we want to have one parent or one adult for this percentage of students enrolled? So I just wonder how will make sense of what that benchmark is telling us? On the health and safety benchmark, this too feels like one where I think we're adding good stuff, but then taking away things that were important for the board to see in this format. I felt like the student behavior, the suspension and expulsion information was really helpful for the board to keep seeing, because this was one area where every time that benchmark came in front of us, we kept pushing on, we need to do better in this area. And I'm really excited about the cap process and us applying it to discipline and behavior. And I do understand the fact that the data keeps shifting and the measures at the state level have moved, but I still think to, and I understand that it shows up in other places, but the same point again, that I think this is data that needs to show up in front of the board. And I do think it still represents the intent of that benchmark. It was my understanding that when we started exploring the health aspects of things, the idea was to expand on the health and safety to include some of the mental health and physical health considerations that we've been talking about, but not to totally lose the focus on discipline, but to just expand it. So those are, I think, all of my comments. I'm not sure if I missed anything.
Can I just provide a couple clarity statements real quickly? So the, for the safety is, we would not be losing exclusionary practices. The state-reported actions for behaviors are things like weapons and others. So it's a state report. So we would still maintain our benchmark around the number of students being suspended or expelled.
Okay, thank you.
And then just a little bit of context, just because I think it's important that we, the thinking around the GPAs in the ninth grade is, our staffs have done a marvelous job of, in spite of what the national research is saying about ninth graders and they fail, even when they fail, as evident by our graduation rates and our VANNYS, they're working and never quitting on there. The thinking is, is taking that conversation and not that it's right or wrong, to the next level to say, it's, we should be looking at GPAs for kids, which we would then see things like Fs in there, maybe not as explicitly, but all grade levels. So you guys can wrestle around whether or not you want to keep that thinking or not. But that was the general thinking behind it.
I appreciate that additional context and I think, and I understand it, and I think that's good. But then I also, my thought back about that is, the pivot away, I think that the transition, the fact, not just the focus on the course failure, and I think that you're right, for looking at GPAs, you will see that students are not passing a class. But I think that the fact that that ninth grader benchmark also honed in on students who are at that transition point was potentially important too. So if we expand it to not, to include a focus on GPA broadly, and then to include a focus on secondary broadly, I just wonder if we lose that, some of that ability to focus and make sure that students are, I know that we're doing the work, but just to see it reflected in the data that students are making successful transitions, not just to high school, but also middle of the high school transitions too. Thank you.
Thank you.
When we reference a slide, can we have someone help us just put the slide on the presentation? I'm not able to get the split screen, if that's possible, maybe Tom can do that. Thank you. Dr. Garcia, I had a question and a comment before we move on with our questioning. The question is, when we talk about the ninth grade, I appreciate Director Cobb's perspective and to add to that in terms of tactics, do we still plan to notify families when a student has a grade that's lower than a C?
Yes, that is our current practice, and I don't see that, that we would move away from that. In fact, we're moving to different ways to do it. I really want to add some additional, real quickly, context is, you know, there's not one right way to do this. And so, you know, this is where we have to have those conversations and say, you know, the danger is that we can't, we get too large. And so that was a lot of the feedback, even, you know, how many benchmarks are too many benchmarks? What does that look like? And so I really respect Director Cobb's comments, and so we'll take those back and we'll consider our final recommendations to you.
And I believe we had 35 benchmarks. Do you know what the updated number is?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I apologize. I can, we, this, the purpose of tonight was is to see if there was a general consensus that you, did you feel like, before we finalize recommendations, that these were the right things to measure and to let go of?
Okay, I think for, two things for the next Thursday night board meeting, I think for the board to understand how many benchmarks we have had and how many benchmarks are being recommended going forward would be helpful. And also for that first read, if you would include, I appreciate the brevity for purposes of tonight's study session, but then in the document that you put together for the board for next Thursday's board meeting, would you have it include all of the benchmarks, not just ones that have been removed or added?
Yes. So currently, just to answer your question, there are 14 academic excellence, seven partnership, and six early learning, and six safety. So I will bring you the final numbers back with the total numbers of the new recommendation.
Okay, my public school math is that's 33, so we're a couple less than we've had. So perhaps we have some flexibility as we move forward. I know we're trying to keep this as streamlined as possible, but perhaps where we see some of these benchmarks that are critical, it seems like we have a little bit of wiggle room if we want to add additional benchmarks.
So that is the current number, President Hines, that are currently not in the recommendations, 33.
33 in the existing 2015 benchmarks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Leon, did you have any questions or comments?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So a question around the, the reason, you've talked about the, we've talked a little bit about the ninth grade failure, or someone who fails in ninth grade being monitored and some reasons around that. My question is, I guess, around the GPA monitoring of that into secondary, so sixth grade to eighth grade, is the reasoning is that there's evidence around following kids earlier in their secondary career in middle school? Will that give us more, you know, advanced notice if there are problems to be able to help them succeed? Is that why that is a new recommendation?
Yes, that intent. At the elementary level, we use a standards-based grading, there is no GPA associated with that. So there is definite alignment, there's a one, two, three, four scale, but GPAs are really started at the secondary level. And there's, there's research about educating folks in that, monitoring those GPAs. But what we heard from a lot of our higher ed partners as well is, you guys have done such a phenomenal job with graduation rates and VANNYS. I think the next level, and there was a lot of conversations around different suggestions, like some suggestions from those partners is, well, we should be monitoring the number of kids that graduate from a university or a community college or apprenticeship program. But when we went deeper into those conversations, they recognized that there are so many variables after you leave high school, this is a Tacoma Public Schools accountability system. And so that recommendation around GPA really was like, great. Not only are they graduating, not only are they taking these rigorous classes, but can we really start to think about, can we prove the academic performance during classes using this as a vehicle?
Okay. Regarding the equity measures that we're measuring, could you give me some background as to how we're using the religion one and how is there evidence in the, in other, from other districts that that's being used in a way that helps us improve, you know, our education? How are we using that religion piece?
So I apologize, that is region. It's, I think you just misread it.
But I misread it. Okay, region.
And I don't think we have the legal ability to track that, so I would caution us to stay away from that one.
Okay, so I cannot see the slides right now, so I must have misread it. Good, I'm glad it's not religion. Okay. And then regarding health, I know we're not going into big discussion there right now, but if, I'd say, I'd be interested in finding a way to measure, you know, we've talked about how difficult it is to measure physical health in a way that's HIPAA compliant. So as we're thinking about this, just to consider days missed of school, you could have two categories for physical problems, physical illness, or for mental illness. And another way would be to consider using the Healthy Kids Survey that's given to the whole state and pulling out the relevant questions around mental health, depression in there to see how we're, how we're doing. So I'll pause there and I may have some more questions in a minute when I get my slides going again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Baumreit, did you have any questions or comments? You might be muted.
Thanks, thanks Scott. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I want to say thank you so much to the staff for having put this together. I am struggling a bit to catch up with this whole concept since it was, you know, a lot of it's new to me, the terminology. I was just getting some help from Andrea about what the definition of a VANNY is. That is a new term, I'd never heard. So, but I gather that's transition from high school to the next step. So that makes more sense now. I was trying to figure out what that might mean. And so I think, I also would like to see, I looked at the material that's on the slides and couldn't, didn't really have a good sense of what was actually in the existing standards, what got replaced. So I'm looking forward to that one that has everything in it, not just the changes. That would be really helpful to me. But I think by and large, I agree with what Director Cobb said about ninth grade. We may not want to use that exact percentage of students failing one class. We may, there may be, according to Dr. Garcia, something better to choose, and I'm totally up for that. I just want to make sure that we have, that we don't lose that transition point, because I think ninth grade adjustment, kids adjusting to ninth grade is really important to track. I think in also the academic excellence, I'm looking at the one, the, and I guess I'm not really understanding the percentage of, when you're talking about graduation, the dropping out, just so, I just want to make clear, I understand removing that dropping out piece, Dr. Garcia, the way you were presenting it, you were saying, we're currently tracking those who graduate, but if someone drops out and they should have graduated but didn't, and then they come back later, if we if we count them, I'm not quite sure how that dropout rate actually works.
Yes.
Re-explain it to me.
Yep, and so in earlier packets, and we'll make sure that the public sees this, too, is you guys had a copy of all the benchmarks, and here's what they are. And so for the purpose of brevity tonight, we didn't include that, and so we'll make sure that those pieces are there. But when we looked at graduation, there was really four elements of graduation. They had the four-year-on-time graduation rate. We had the five-year graduation rate, extended graduation rate. Then we had the percentage of students that dropped out was the third element. And then the fourth element was how many of those students were we re-engaging? And what we've learned is, is we are not letting go the number of students that are dropping out. So we are still tracking that. We're still tracking the first three. We're proposing that, it became complex to give you an accurate picture of, when a student is at that phase, oftentimes we found out they would drop out, re-engage for a short period of time, drop out again, and it wasn't an actual reflection of that.
Okay.
And so we think that the, the more consistent way to tell the story is four-year graduation rates extended and not losing the dropout feature. So we will continue to report percentage of students dropping out, but we will then not look at re-engagement. We will not lose our efforts for re-engagement. I want to be explicitly clear here. We are not losing those efforts. We're still going to have the Willie Stewart Academy, the Fresh Start programs. We take a lot of pride, but we're measuring those in graduation, even though they do not count as part of our overall graduation statistics.
Thank you. That is so much clearer. I really appreciate that, that description. That sounds fine to me. So then, moving on to partnerships, and I, this whole experience that we've been going through with COVID-19 has made me appreciate and deeply the partnerships that we have with our community partners, as well as parents and engagement of students and everyone involved to making sure that our students go from, to a successful academic conclusion. And it's also made me wonder a little bit about thinking through those partners that have come, with the gaps in partnerships that currently exist around, that have made distance learning possible as we're building that out, and hopefully as you're thinking about what we're tracking and how we're tracking it, maybe to think a little bit outside the box about things we hadn't previously thought that we needed. So I'm not sure I have anything tangible, except for that, I just think that some of the things we've been counting don't include, like the lack of connectivity that exists for kids. It wasn't something we were tracking because we didn't think about it. Now everybody wants to know what families are connected, which ones aren't. Maybe that's a partnership we could really, I'm not sure where that actually fits, if that's under a different benchmark, but I think some of the questions that are coming up now in this current situation, I'm not sure that they are all, they have a place at this point. So that's just something to keep in mind as you're putting the pieces of this puzzle together to make sure that, that we actually keep track of the gaps that we currently have and how we're planning to fix them in the future. And I think in some of these, in, and I guess the social-emotional learning connection in all of these, I don't necessarily see them explicit, but maybe that's because they're already in the benchmarks that exist, and you're not changing that. So that's, I'm not sure. Especially in the early learning one, I think that's so important that I don't see it.
It is now in the health and safety, the draft benchmark recommendations, and it is expansion. So we would build on the successes that we had at the SEL, at the elementary level, at the earlier ages. And technically, you don't have a benchmark right now as a board for the secondaries. But we heard through all of our great community efforts and stuff, the need and the importance to focus that also and measure that at the secondary level, or at least ensure that every school has a plan.
Got it. So you're sort of taking the, what we were tracking, the ideas from elementary, and now expanding it up through the secondary, both levels.
Yes, so the public accountability, and remember, this is, you know, a report card is, the community would see, yes, every school does have one, and they would have access to see what that plan was.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, I think that's, that's it for me till I hear more. Thank you.
And Elizabeth, I would just add, and Carla and Josh both know, from the onset in 2012, when we first started the social-emotional learning work, I have wanted to see those secondary plans. And the rationale has been, let's build the baseline through the elementary schools. And I think we, as a board and individual board members, have seen that work reflected in the meetings that we had, the listening sessions that we had with middle school and high school, that they have received that for the most part during those formative elementary school years. And so that's the rationale for now being able to include middle school and high school as a part of that elementary plan, because we've got the framework in place. We've built capacity, and I think we now have years of kind of anecdotal and more formal assessment to understand what are those successful elementary or middle school and high school plans, what do they look like?
Thank you. That's perfect. I really appreciate that.
Sure. Director Keating, did you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just to, I actually wanted to build off of Director Cobb's questions around volunteer partnerships and volunteerism. I think I brought this up in a previous study session, but around having a way to also measure retention of volunteers. And I know just that the, when it comes to parent engagement, the volunteer efforts or not, volunteer recruitment in elementary looks very different once you get to middle and high school. And how to help parents go from, if they're privileged enough to be able to volunteer in an elementary school setting, then how do we retain and track the parent-family, not just parent, but family engagement beyond that? And then I appreciated Director Leon's question or ask about absences and like having them in categories. My one question about that is, my understanding they're just categorized as excused and unexcused currently. So then I also, I really wonder about being able to track them in a more defined context. I think that's really good. And I know that there are some students that also miss school for extracurricular reasons, and maybe that can be captured to find out if, like, if students are traveling, you know, whether that's for educational purposes, whether that's for music performances, athletic performances, or athletic, like competitions and things like that. I think, I wonder if that would also be useful information to track if it wasn't too burdensome? So other than that, that's about all I have.
Right, thank you. Tom, could you please put up the slide, goal number two, partnerships? Perfect, thank you. A couple of thoughts. I'm wondering where we specifically say parents. And over the years, we've adopted language that is parent guardian or family. If, and it's semantical, but it may go a long way in terms of being more inclusive, because families look different, and who's advocating and interacting on behalf of students looks different. So I would be interested in revising that parental language to be more inclusive. And then when we talk about partnerships, for years, we have talked about mentors with an aspirational goal of all of our students having mentors, or high school students all having mentors. I think that there's an opportunity to get more specific in partnership. What I hear from all of my colleagues when we talk about partnership is less about general participation and more about what are the specific outcomes we're driving towards? And how do we measure how close we are to getting to those outcomes? So if we set up an outcome of every high school student with a mentor, what does that look like? So I would be interested in, in the next couple of weeks, some exploration into that sort of a benchmark. And then when I hear Director Baumreit talk about access to the internet and what we're learning through this COVID-19 distant learning and extended distant learning and device, access to a device, and I would anticipate, as an aside, that the board over the next few weeks will be talking about what sort of policy and budget needs to be in place in order to support robust distant learning. But I wonder, under the operational goal, if there is an opportunity to create a benchmark related to technology, where it's not just how new are the devices, but who has a device, who's in need of a device? And it's great, I've got a device, can I access the internet? That it seems like there may be some important assessment that could be done around those benchmarks as we live them right now through COVID-19. And Director Cobb, did you have a follow-up?
I had a couple points of follow-up that I dropped in the chat window. One was related to the partnerships, the one comment I forgot to ask, and I'll just, I wrote it, but I'll say it, was just whether, I was following up on your, I had this thought, but also following on your comment or your question about whether or not we were going to continue to send notices to family members when students receive a C or lower. I have this, I raised the question already about what will our metric of good be for collecting something like the number of parents or number of parents/guardians who fill out the survey? So an alternative measure or additional measure might, I'm just thinking of the sequence of, we know, we already have this mechanism where we notify parents of the C, but it's only useful if parents are enrolled in HAC. So do we have already information about the number of parents or guardians who are enrolled in and use HAC? And is that a smart benchmark to start thinking about if we want to use that as a mechanism to facilitate that family engagement with keeping kids moving forward? So that was the one question. And then I just seconded Director Leon's comments about thinking about how we can use as an attendance measure in the health and safety, with the health and safety concept in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. May I add some more commentary, if that's possible?
Sure, go ahead.
So I hear the general desire, and I don't want to say that one benchmark is better than the other, because these are not Dr. Garcia's benchmarks. These are the Tacoma Public Schools, and this is what people, and what you heard from their community feedback. Doesn't mean that it's right or wrong or indifferent, but I hear there's a general sense to somehow find a way to continue to maintain that ninth grade GP, ninth grade failure rate from many of you. There's a real piece to this, when we do these things, is do we have the ability to measure what we are trying to do? And so we will be pushing on you and each other to say, it's great, there are many things that we'd like to learn more about, but do we have a, what you've guided us in the past is, these are designed to be dynamic, that we build action plans around them, that we report out to them, that we align budget, and that they, they go to the primary purpose. So none of your comments are off, but those were some of the filters as staff was providing feedback, community partners and the engagement is, can we measure that? And can we do it in a dynamic way? So for example, like the Healthy Use Survey, it's not given every year. And so, you know, it doesn't mean that we will stop talking about that. And so there's that old saying that not everything is measured is the most important thing, and not everything that's not measured isn't important. It's much more articulate than I just said. But you get the gist of it is, this is not a reflection of everybody's desire to report everything that is happening in the district. These are high-level benchmarks for the purpose of how are we reporting and doing that work? Definitely the comment around families, that feedback just came even as latest today. So we will consider that, and how will we change that language? Need some, you know, we've aligned our budgeting for priorities process. We know that we've just come out of a $50 million budget reduction. So there was a lot of sensitivity towards adding certain things and knowing, would we be able to do a work plan to support them? And so as you're thinking about our final recommendations and what's new, and you're providing individual feedback, really consider that. There were a lot of great ideas, and when we started to put some of those great ideas to, what are some of the other things that could come off the plate? Easy in regards to benchmarks, they didn't surface to that level. And so just giving you that for some context of there. And then I heard the real other piece to that, oh, the attendance. Right now, our Foundation for Tacoma Students, there was an alignment conversation. They have been tracking student attendance from a community perspective and trying to honor that and not duplicate those efforts. And so that was a part of the reason why attendance didn't surface up again on this. It is categorized for excused, not excused. We can look at different things, but we have to be sensitive to how far we push a family to, is their response, and where does that fit in the conversation? And there's a sensitivity to that. So was the outcome, do we want to know, are kids being successful in classes, or are they attending? And is there a correlation? Absolutely. But we also work with the Foundation for Tacoma Students to try to inform their strategic plan and also look at ours to not add duplication as we think about, what is the community's responsibility, and what is the school's responsibility? And how do they work in alignment? So that's just a little context of some of the conversations around attendance behind the scenes. And then I heard from a couple of you folks around revising the information technology to really look at device and internet access versus age. So those are the feedback that I heard. Did I miss something?
I think you captured it, Josh. I'm not hearing anybody say otherwise. And I would ask, I think that at times when we have first readings, it tends to be more perfunctory. But I think, given the importance of this topic and the challenges of our remotely coming together, I would ask all of the board members to come prepared next Thursday to have a rigorous conversation, to get this next to final draft right, so that then we can come on May 14th and be prepared to take final action. And if we have follow-up in between now and next week, Superintendent, would you like us, how would you like us to communicate that back to you and your team?
Director Hines, the feedback regarding the benchmarks? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. So that we could be doing our due diligence between now and next Thursday, so that when we come back next Thursday, prepared to really look at this, not just, not just kind of, you know, like I said, a lot of the first readings are, tend to be perfunctory, and we don't get into any sort of conversation. I think we would be remiss if we didn't take advantage of next Thursday's business meeting, since we're really scoped around essential business. I would say that this is some of the most essential business of the district, is our guiding light document. And so rather than us waiting until 6 o'clock next Thursday to come at you with the, all the good ideas, how can we be communicating that to you and your team between now and next Thursday?
So you can, you can send that feedback to Josh or to me, and we'll make sure we incorporate, you know, figure out a way to incorporate it into the appendix or the document.
Okay, that sounds good. So we're all on the same page. Let's, let's plan then as board members, if we have specific feedback, to send that to the superintendent and the deputy superintendent, and either ceasing us or having Tanya then send it out, so we're all on the same page, and so that we don't duplicate effort.
For the next board meeting as well, we will bring back that redline copy. This is our current benchmarks, the ones that we are proposing go away. And then we will also, based off of tonight's feedback, and this is why tonight was very important, was is, we didn't want to finalize the language around the draft benchmarks if you folks weren't aligned with the concept. So your feedback tonight is really important, to your point, President Hines has started the conversation. So we'll bring you some revisions back, and there'll be a copy with all of the benchmarks that are being proposed, so you can see what goes away and the new ones in a redline version. It'll be a Word document, so you'll have some time, you'll get it early next week to reflect on those. If you have, knowing based on the conversation tonight, ideas that you want to measure for some of these new concepts, language you'd like us to consider, please send us that as soon as it comes into your mind.
All righty, thank you. And before we move on to the next agenda item, given that we might anticipate, under normal circumstances, having people show up at a business meeting to provide us with their public comment, understanding that their public comment, understanding that we have new guidelines around receiving public comment, that needs to come to us in a written form 24 hours in advance of the meeting, I would encourage, while you've been out there working with our partners to gather feedback, I would urge any other member of the community that has a perspective they'd like to share to follow the guidelines, to be able to participate in a meaningful way through public comment and in time for next Thursday's business meeting. Next agenda item, 2.2. By the way, we're doing pretty good on time for our 90-minute study session, we're about 50 minutes into it. It's the State Board of Education waiver process. We're going to talk about the application for emergency waiver, as well as a WASD model resolution regarding credit waiver. Superintendent Santorno.
I'm glad to speak to you, and I don't have any pretty slides. This is a really dense, complex conversation, but I'm going to take you through it. It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. By way of introduction, what I want to say is that we are lucky in Tacoma, because we've had staff that have pursued waivers all along, I mean, have pursued some innovative policy to make sure that we have kids get credit in a variety of different ways. Other districts haven't done that. And so as a board, you've taken the policy, the operations and some of the things, I'll give Dr. Garcia lots of accolades about figuring out ways kids could earn credit and getting it on the books, and then the board has taken it and made policy out of it. So actually, we are in good shape as we go forward, looking at policy to support students. So what happened is the State Board has presented a toolkit that says, he, you're, you know, they, they have a toolkit that says, here are the ways that we want students to be able to, we want to give you the emergency authorization to waive credit. And what we find is that we don't need all the tools of the toolkit, because we've already put into policy so many different ways that students could go and look, so that the WASD model policies that you may have heard or read about, we didn't need all of them. We do, however, want to pursue this emergency waiver process. And you heard me talk earlier about, you know, that we wanted, and I think you have endorsed as a board, that we wanted a specific policy of tracking our graduates individually, you know, so looking at them and what they've done, and this emergency policy really follows that. So two things I'm going to talk to you about. One is that I want you to review this emergency rule-making document, it's from the State Board. It outlines the process that allows school districts to apply for an additional waiver authority to assist high school seniors who were on track to graduate, and that's a good, that's an important, that's an important phrase, on track to graduate, but were negatively impacted by the closures. And then second, after that, after we've gone through that and looked at this emergency waiver of credit based on graduation requirements, then I want you to look at a resolution that we'd like to put on the agenda on the next week, that, that you could go ahead and approve, and approve. So what the new emergency, what this new emergency effort is about, is, are those two things, is really taking students that are on track to graduate, and on track to graduate means that the student has earned credits and has current or planned enrollment, that as a gubernatorial declaration of emergency of February 29, 2020, they would have been sufficient and had sufficient a number of credits to graduate at the end of the school year. So it's like, you know, it can't be that you were desperately behind and you only had five credits, it has to be you were on track to graduate as of February 29, 2020, but that you had some, you had some problems that prevented you, you know, from, the closure has prevented you from pursuing that. I'm making, I'm totally making this up, I should have thought of some really good cogent examples, but I'm going to make this one up. So you needed one PE credit, and you were taking bowling at the bowling alley, and now the bowling alley's closed, and you can't possibly finish that credit, you know? So there's an example of you were on track, you were ready to go, you were signed up for the right classes, but for some reason you can't finish it. And then our responsibility, your responsibility, our joint responsibility as a district, is to put forth, that's the other big definition that's used, is we have to put in a good faith effort to do two things. One, make sure, make sure that we examine all different pathways for a student to actually get the credit legitimately, okay? So if we find out somebody has, I'm making this up, sorry, could have done a better job. If we find out somebody had a bowling alley in their basement and they can get that credit and get it monitored, then we don't have to get a waiver, because they were able to get that credit, you know, in a legitimate way. And that is the state's first, first desire, is that we figure out a way to get the student to get the credit, and that we make, if we decide to waive a credit, we can prove that we've taken a good faith effort to get, to have them get credit in a, in a regular, earn credits in a regular way. So those two things, those are the two main things in the, in the emergency waiver are those. Now, beginning on April 15th, so that was yesterday, you can submit an application. So our timeline, the first timeline was to give this preview for you today. The other requirements, in order for us to get the authority, is we have to consider equity in administering a waiver. So since we're doing it individually, we're making sure that we don't discriminate or make any differences, you know, based on any kind of class about who can get access to the waiver. And if there's going to be a disparate impact of the waiver, we have to really mitigate it. And so the only thing I can think of is that, you know, that waiver's going to preclude you from another opportunity later on, so we have to look at that. And then the other thing is, you know, again, they reiterate that we have to make sure that we have a good faith effort. Now, I've got Malik on the line. Malik, if I say something incorrect, this is, he's the lawyer that's gone through this, please say, Carla, that's wrong, you, I, you can just say that in the middle. So our job is to review the student's individual completed and planned coursework and determine that they were on track to graduate, demonstrate good faith effort, so that's high school principals and teachers and counselors and liaisons all working together to see what can we do to make sure that, you know, that this student has every opportunity to finish the credit, and then also talk with the individual student and talk to them about what the waiver means and talk to their parents, make sure they understand it. And if there is a benefit or a drawback of the waiver, including a post-secondary impact, like you need to have an A in Spanish, and so, in order to go to the university of your choice, and so how, if you, if you ask to get a waiver on that Spanish course, then how is that going to impact you in the future? So those are all the things we want you to really pay attention to as you're going through. There's a process that you have to go through for the waiver, and if, I think you've got a copy of the application. First of all, can, Tom, can you put up a copy of the application for us? So the application, you can see, is simple, and it is, you know, it's simple and sweet, and all it says is that this is the application for emergency waiver of credit-based graduation requirements. And I asked Malik, who kind of analyzed the toolkit and these, and these applications, if he would take us through it. So Malik, will you take us through, kind of give us the, the application and what the purpose of it is?
Sure, no problem. So at the top of the document here, what you're looking, oh, there it goes. So what Tom has in front of us here is a PDF version of the actual application that we would send to SBE, to the State Board of Education, to get this additional authority to waive credits, just like Superintendent Santorno said, kind of as a last-case resort, we prefer, and the state prefers, and students and families prefer that the students earn credits, but if we have to waive a credit, the bowling alley, I thought was a great example, the bowling alley's closed, kind of difficult to make that recreational sports credit. This gives us additional authority to waive. And so what this application is, if you scroll down just a little bit, Tom, the top part just gives you some background, lets you know that the governor signed House Bill 2965 about a month ago, March 17th, and this authority comes from Section 10 of that House bill. So this part is like Superintendent Santorno says, it's quick, it's easy. What this part does is it takes certain areas of the law, and it puts it into the application where we have to affirmatively tell SBE that we are going to comply, that basically bring it to the front of our attention, that we're going to operate this waiver with equity in mind, in accordance with WAC 18111, which is where we'll find the, the actual law, the, where it will actually be written. And we check yes to these things at the bottom, we, Superintendent Santorno would be the one that signs it. It goes to the State Board of Education, and they're reviewing these applications in rounds. The first round of review will happen next week on the 21st, and they'll continue to review them until late June. If you scroll a little bit down, Tom, to the bottom part of the application, there's one, re, keep going, okay, great. One of the things that is super important to note about this waiver is it's temporary in nature. So once the superintendent signs, we have additional flexibility and additional waiver authority, but it ends on July 31, 2020. So we have the ability to use it where it's necessary to help some of our class of 2020 seniors, and it also includes super seniors or fifth-year seniors, I think they're called. It also helps them as well if, you know, they had intended to graduate this year, but they were originally in the class of 2019. That authority expires July 31st. So it's temporary in nature, like Superintendent Santorno said, we intend sort of to use it as a last-case resort, where we've made good faith efforts to try to get the student to earn the credit, the student is also, was on track to graduate before the mandatory school closure on March 13th. This gives us this additional flexibility that we didn't have before the school closure. So that, this is, this is word for word what the application looks like, it's actually in the iGrants system, not in paper, but this is a paper version of what that application is. And it relates to the next thing on our agenda item, which I think Superintendent Santorno might start off for us, unless she wants to pause for questions, which is a resolution which would sort of discuss your support of this, us filing an application for this additional authority.
Are there any questions or comments on the waiver application?
I have a couple of comments slash questions.
Sure, Vice President Cobb.
I have one comment, I appreciated your discussion around what they mean by equity. When I read that, I had that question, it was like, so I do, I appreciate you Superintendent Santorno raising considerations of equity and making sure every student's plan is individualized on the front end, but also considering the implications on the back end. So thank you for that. One question about the application I have is, I'm curious, and I, I'm assuming that that waiver authority expiration date of July 31st came from the law, or came from the WAC as it's written, but I'm wondering about the misalignment between that date and when the school year technically ends, which is August 31st. So I don't know if you've all had conversations about that. And then my last question is, and I'll, I'll just let you answer them both, is about the definition of on track, because I know that from my experience in the district, that we're working with students up until the day of graduation to get them to that final step. So do we have broad authority to determine who was on track and to work with them through July 31st to get them graduated? So who's on, definition of on track, and then July 31st versus August 1st? Thank you.
Yeah, so if you'd like, I can, I can take both those questions if you would like.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the first question about the July 31st date, that comes right from the House Bill 2965, the governor signed it. It's not just a bill about schools and what we can do about waivers, it's about a lot of things. It just happens to be that in the middle, Section 10 is the part that applies to us, the governor basically tasks SBE, the State Board of Education, with coming up with an application and a process and a system for us to apply for and use this additional authority. And the governor put in the state law that it ends July 31st. I think, and I've worked in schools for many, many years, and you're right, we work, we do work with kids right up until the last minute to make sure they walk across the stage. But I think the idea is that a lot of the decisions would all have already been done by that July 31st date. One of the reasons they put it beyond sort of a June date is it's contemplated that if a student had planned to take something in summer school, then that could count as being on track to graduate. So for example, if a student needed eight credits to graduate, they were going to do these six credits the second semester, and they were going to do two credits in summer school. So that counts as on track to graduate. You don't have to be perfectly on track, having passed every class, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, and first semester, 12th grade, if you were on track, if your planned coursework or the courses you were enrolled in, if that was, if you were set up to graduate before the mandatory closure, that describes a universe of students this is available for. Oh, and your second question about on track to graduate, so that's a, you may recall the Superintendent Santorno paused when she was talking about on track to graduate. The reason for that pause is, on track to graduate isn't something that we make up what that definition is, it's a statutorily defined term. So in the WAC, it's 180-111-020, it tells you what on track to graduate means. So the literal definition from the law is that the student's earned or planned enrollment as of the declaration of emergency on February 29th would have been sufficient, as determined by the LEA, for the student to meet minimum graduation requirements. So it's, we don't, we have a little bit of flexibility in thinking about what that plan, because a student hasn't enrolled yet, so what exactly did he plan? We have to talk to the counselor, what was the plan for the student to walk? We have that flexibility there, but we can't go beyond the bounds that were set by the definition of the law.
And Director Cobb, I also think, you're right, I mean, I've been at graduation ceremonies where the principal has pointed to a student and said, yeah, he finished his last credit this morning at 3:00 a.m. And so, to me, what it means is, as we're doing this analysis individually of every student, that we look at their plan, what was their plan to do? And you know, you have students that have, they thought, well, I can get this last class done on edge annuity, edge annuity on the last five days of school. And so I think that counts, if you have a viable plan and you are within the scope of feasibility of actually giving it done, then I, I think that we can work with students and say, and verify, and that's what we'll have to do for the, you know, and with the terms of the application, we'll have to verify that they were on track to graduate.
And just one other little subtlety that is important here, this, this is for the waiver. We're going to have some students that will work with us beyond January or July 31st, and that was part of their plan, and we are going to still work with them, and they may still graduate on August 2nd. They just may not be eligible, and that may, they don't necessarily need the waiver, and we'll address their plans accordingly. So the subtlety here is, is only for those students that need the waiver for all the things that the superintendent and the deputy general counsel mentioned. But we will have other students that, the plan was is that you're going to work with us all summer long already, and we're going to keep on working with those kids all summer long as well.
One of the things that, that the law says, and the context of it that we have to remember is it's not for every senior, we're not going to take it very, you know, lightly, we want to make sure that, you know, you had that progress that we're looking for. It requires an analysis, it's more than just your grade or your, your course credits, it, it's, we have eight graduation pathways, you have to be on track with those pathways. And again, you're delegating to me the authority to say that the resolution says that we believe we're putting in a good faith effort.
Thank you.
Malik, the timeline, you want to go to the timeline real quick?
Sure.
If somebody, if somebody's typing, it's interrupting with the feed.
So, Tom, could you, I'm going to share my screen, Tom, and could you make it so that it's kind of visible in a large screen format for people at home and for board members? Is it, is it visible kind of in large screen format? Okay, thank you. So this is a timeline produced by the State Board of Education, kind of laying out what we've talked about already. So the governor declared, emergency declaration happened on February 29th, schools were closed on March 13th. On March 17th, the governor signed into law House Bill 2965, which tasked the State Board of Education with coming up with this process and this application that we just showed you. The rules specifically were ratified on April 8th, a little bit later in that timeline in a special board meeting last week. And like I said, the, I think Superintendent Santorno mentioned it earlier, the applications became available April 15th, so that was yesterday. Their first review will happen on April 21st by SBE, so they'll be uh, by SBE, so they'll be granting a number of school districts this authority, the ones that have applied for it. Uh, what we don't see on this timeline, but is important to note is that, um, so today we're giving a little preview of what that application looks like. Um, after this, we'll also get a little preview of what the resolution we'd like to bring to you next week will look like. Uh, if next week on April, I believe it's the twenty-third is the business meeting. If at that time, it looks like the board is ready to support the resolution and authorizes the superintendent to go forward and sign the application and send it to SBE on the twenty-fourth, um, she'll be able to go into the I-grant system, sign her name and get it out. Uh, it'll take about a week before we find out if SBE grants our application. And then we'll have that authority until July thirty-first. So that's what the timeline would look like.
Emily, um, if I remember, Malik, if I remember correctly, um, we can only grant up to two credits for each student, for a student to two, correct?
A good question. So that was, uh, we have had the ability to waive up to two credits. Um, if they weren't core credits, so these would be electives. We've had that ability from before these rules came and these emergency rules came to place. So you're right that we do have that ability to, to waive the, up to two credits, um, for non-fundational classes. With this authority, if we had to waive, um, a math class or an English class, if except the application is accepted by SBA, uh, the State Board of Education, then that authority would expand. So we'd still be able to waive two because we've, we've, we've always been able to waive those two, or at least for the last several years. But this gives us the additional authority to waive additional classes we weren't able to waive before, um, the emergency rules came in.
Is there a credit limit? There a credit limit?
There is not a credit limit. The, there were a lot of discussions at that April eighth meeting at SBE about whether they were going to, because they could have chosen to put limits in there, whether they were going to, uh, limit the number of credits or whether they were going to leave it open to school districts to determine. And they decided that the on-track to graduate, the discussion was, it wasn't in the law. But the discussion at the time was that the on-track to graduate standard has a way of limiting the credits already. And so they decided not to put an additional limit there. Um, you know, if a student was on track to graduate at the time that schools were mandatorily closed, they sort of have to have completed a number of credits already. So we're already limiting the number of credits that are possible to be waived. And then like you said, most of our students will probably, we're hoping, most of our students will be working to earn those credits. This is just the last resort. Uh, so that'll have a further effect of limiting the number of credits. So, um, there is no numerical limitation, but the circumstances sort of impose constraints that can't be avoided, which has the effect of limiting the number of credit.
You know, and actually, you know, when I gave the bowling example, I mean, really, we have the ability to waive a non-fundational PE credit already, already. If, you know, uh, if other activities can, uh, replace it. So, uh, you, you know, the, in the, in the board placing this authority in my hands or my designee and saying that, uh, we will, uh, make that good faith effort and that we will only look at students on track to graduate. It's a huge responsibility, but I believe it is a huge help. Um, this waiver is a great, um, you know, for the State Board to go and make this waiver access. Uh, is really going to help us with some students who, um, who meet the criteria. Uh, you want to show the resolution, Malik?
Sure, I'm going to pop out of sharing my screen. Tom, if you could please put up the model resolution. Here we go. Can everybody see that? Okay, well, I suppose if I can see it, you guys can see it. So this is the, uh, this was a, a model resolution written by the State School Directors Association by WASDA. Uh, keep in mind, and this is a brand new, uh, we have not yet localized it for our school district. So what this resolution, and I, I think it was included in your materials as well. The, what this resolution is essentially saying is like a lot of resolutions at the city and school district level, starts out with a lot of whereas's. And so it's sort of laying out where we are now. So whereas we have some rules about how students get to graduation. And whereas the, uh, you know, on March thirteenth, the governor had a mandatory closure of all schools. Whereas, you know, that closure has extended to the end of the school year. Um, if you can keep scrolling down, Tom. Uh, whereas the district has implemented and we have, uh, us policy twenty-four-ten. One of the things we're going to do when we localize this before it comes to you next week uh, is make sure those policy numbers are correct, the twenty-four-ten citation is correct. We do have a policy twenty-four-ten that states, uh, some of the graduation requirement information. Um, our numbering isn't twenty-four-eighteen for the next section, uh, but we do have all this information. So once the whereas is over, what we're, if you keep scrolling down, Tom. Um, where it says now therefore be it resolved. What this is really talking about is, uh, that it's important to the board that the district explore this additional waiver authority should it be necessary for students, you know, that have been negatively impacted by the school closure. Um, it's at the very bottom, uh, uh, line, it further incorporates, on that first page there, it further incorporates some of the legal requirements in using this waiver. It basically says that the district is going to make a good faith effort as defined in the law, um, to help in students individual, on an individual, uh, individually determined basis. Students who are on track to graduate, the district will use this waiver, keeping equity in mind. Um, uh, we will reach out to families and try to seek to mitigate the potential negative impacts of using a waiver rather than earning the credit. It basically sets out that we sort of affirmatively state that we intend to comply with all those areas of the law. And at the very bottom section, I believe it's on the last page, uh, the, there it is, uh, be it further resolved, the very last part is that this resolution is the conclusive evidence that the board authorizes Superintendent Santorino to sign her name at the bottom of that application um, on the twenty-fourth, if you vote to, uh, to make this resolution on the twenty-third. Um, it's basically the evidence that you support Superintendent Santorino's action, that you're on board with the um, applying for additional authority to, to help on our class of two thousand and twenty senior.
Thank you, Malik.
No problem.
Any questions?
Already, thank you. Uh, questions or comments on the waiver or on the resolution? Vice President Cobb?
I already got to ask my questions. Thank you. I don't have any further.
Director Leon?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I got logged, logged off, had to log back on. So, uh, is this waiver only for seniors? And if so, how is it going to affect? And I could see this easily affecting also many juniors and sophomores classes that can, you know, snowball into effect their ability to graduate on time next year. Um, so I guess that's one question, uh, maybe you can answer that first.
Sure. Go ahead.
Sure, so.
Sorry.
Yeah, so the, uh, it's in the language of the law that this waiver is for, it's a very limited class of individuals. So if you had to think about it like a Venn diagram, the first circle in the Venn diagram is that you're a senior in the class of two thousand and twenty. And this could be because that was naturally when you were going to graduate. Or it could have been you were a senior in two thousand and nineteen, you had to take some more classes. So you're now a fifth-year senior, also in the class of two thousand and twenty. It would apply to those folks, but it wouldn't apply to somebody who's a junior, traditional junior this year. Um, I can tell you that at the April eighth and at the, uh, there was a State Board of Education meeting, the one before April eighth, people brought that up and exactly what you're saying, Director Leon. You know, what is this, what about for juniors? It, it isn't just seniors that are impacted. And the discussion was basically, well, if it appears next year that there's additional authority the school districts need for another year as well, but there's nothing that would preclude the governor from signing a law that authorized SBE to do something similar or the same for next year. But for this year, for right now, the focus is on the seniors in the class of two thousand and twenty. The students who are expected to walk across that stage in a couple of months, those are the ones this is targeted to help. Uh, we still have all our other authority that we had before this law was passed. Um, after July thirty-first, when it expires, we still have those tools to help the juniors. Um, but unless they give us something new next year, for the juniors who will be seniors, uh, we would not have this authority for them.
Okay, thank you. Um, and this waiver, you know, I presume, uh, it's something that we're going to pass. Uh, gives you the authority, uh, Superintendent Santorino, to help any senior that needs the help. We don't have, you don't have to, this isn't a process, it has to be approved by the State Board of Education for every single class, for every single student, right? They trust you that you will have done your diligence on that, I presume.
Yeah, the, the resolution is all about you giving me the authority to make the decision.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say we have to keep a record of every class we waive or every student for whom we waive classes. They haven't come up with the, the State Board of Education hasn't yet come up with what that reporting will look like from us to them. But we do have to keep a record for it and the idea is that we will have to report it to them. Um, so we, so, you know, so, so there is this sort of like accountability piece to it. It's not just sort of a blanket authority to waive your classes for all your seniors.
Okay. And so I was logged off for a little while, um, a few minutes ago. So Superintendent may have already mentioned this, I think she's going to mention it at the end of the meeting. It doesn't pertain to this discussion, but there were some questions many constituents had about.
Okay, let's limit right now to just the waiver at hand and then we can come back to that.
Okay, so I, so she didn't talk about it then, because I was offline.
Okay. Been talking about agenda items.
Okay, all right, I'll wait till the end of the meeting for that.
All right, thank you. Director Baumbrich, did you have any questions or comments on the waiver or resolution?
Nope, seems very clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Keating, any questions or comments?
Um, I think one thing I was curious about, um, that kind of follows Director Leon is around, um, in the conversation is Malik that you had on the eighth. Um, where I, I'm guessing that Running Start and College in the Classroom, were those credits discussed at all in potential future waivers?
Yes, so, uh, am I muted? Oh, good, I'm okay. I want to make sure I wasn't muted. Uh, so yes, this would apply for students that are doing Running Start. Um, in fact, there was some discussion about them having a particular difficulty. Uh, you know, as you, so a lot of students that do Running Start are on the quarter system. So when the governor closed schools on March thirteenth, there were some students who hadn't yet started that last quarter of school. Uh, so there, the classes they were enrolled in, they were finishing up one quarter, hadn't started the next quarter. Um, and so there was conversations about like, how do we make sure those on a different schedule than the traditional two semester high schools that we have, wouldn't get left behind? And so one of the reasons they wrote it kind of vague is to allow us to use it for students that are situated in those kinds of circumstances. So if you're a Running Start student that were, that's on track to graduate, uh, this should apply to you as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
A great question.
All right, thank you for the presentation. So we'll anticipate this being on the agenda next Thursday for our consideration to adopt the resolution to grant the superintendent the authority to apply for the waiver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, and Superintendent, Superintendent Santorino, I know, uh, we are in our first formal week of uh, the more focused learning, uh, in compliance with the OSPI guidelines. Uh, and that you've already briefed us on how that curriculum aligns with the Washington State, uh, learning standards. We are, I think this gets to the question that Director Leon had. Um, we're beginning to get inquiries from constituents regarding grading process. And I know from a conversation with you earlier in the week that there is, uh, there's guidance that is still being considered from OSPI. Do you have any update at this time or is that something that you could put in a Friday report? In terms of what are the grading options, students and families?
We were, we were hoping to get guidance today. Josh, did you, Director, I mean, Dr. Garcia, did you hear anything? Uh, we anticipated that it would come today or tomorrow. If it comes in time to get it in a Friday report, I will. Um, as soon as we get it, we'll update you. So I want the public to know is that we have fought long and hard about grading and we have a policy or a procedure that we think will work. And we also know that if the state directs a specific policy, the State Board of, I mean, the, um, State Superintendent does have the authority, um, to, uh, direct the grading policy. So we don't want to put anything out there until we've heard definitely, definitively from him, uh, what he's going to direct. So that's what we're waiting for.
Okay, thank you. The State Board guidance comes down. Is the expectation that districts will have to follow that guidance? Or do you anticipate there'll be any flexibility at the local level to make individual district, or it's too soon to understand?
What, what I, uh, what we are hoping for is, uh, you know, uh, we have advocated long and hard for a policy that's flexible and that gives us some, uh, flexibility to work with our students. And so that's what we want, is something that's a guideline and, uh, but that also allows us to do what we think is fair for our students.
Yeah, hopefully they come down with flexibility. I think, um, all board members have heard from families advocating, um, both sides of the issue. We've heard from families that have said, please, 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 pass fail. And we've heard from other families that say, please, 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 let her grade. Um, and I would anticipate that the board, um, next week and in the upcoming weeks, as we contemplate what a prolonged distant learning looks like, um, that we'll have ample opportunity to have these conversations. I think that there's a lot of uncertainty out in the community and that's understandable. And I think from the board's perspective, it's incumbent upon us to make certain that we're both listening to constituents and also, um, in alignment with OSPI. I know I've had a number of conversations with people saying those, you know, the guidance that's coming down, the mandates that come from the governor and OSPI and the guidance that come, there's an expectation that local school districts follow it. And while there's an interest in us at times getting ahead of it, I think that, um, you know, individually, my, uh, admonition to you, Superintendent, would be let's build this right. Let's not build it quickly. And we know we've got around eight weeks until that June sixteenth end of school in Tacoma. Um, I think we need to figure out how we help students and families over this next eight-week period. I think that there's going to be some important conversations that this board has about how we build a long-term, sustainable uh, distant learning to include online learning and those other components of distant learning. We certainly know that devices are an issue that we're going to have to wrestle with. We know access to the internet is an issue we're going to have to wrestle with. And so on behalf of the board, I ask you and your team to begin looking at policies that will, uh, enable that, that may hinder that and bring that before the board so that we can, uh, be evaluating, uh, through a policy lens. And I know we're headed right into the budget season and so are there financial considerations that we will need to take as a board to be aligned with, uh, with those policies?
Uh, yeah, it's important for me, uh, that the public knows, um, that we're not sitting on our hands. One of the things that I, I'm not sure if it's in, um, but you'll hear about next week is we are also having audiences with seniors at each one of our high schools to make sure we've hit, you know, all of their concerns. It doesn't mean that, I mean, uh, if you ask the consensus of what students want, they want a real graduation. Um, I may not be able to, we may not be able to deliver that based on, you know, the governor's directions. But we are considering what our students are saying and we know what the issues are. We think we have a grading policy that, um, will accommodate our students. We, we just, uh, we know, I don't want to be, uh, out in front of that and then have to retract it.
Yeah, I think there's a fusion right now with the, the guidance and what does this mean? And I think for us to be responsive, uh, but also for the public to understand that these things are happening in real time and we're interpreting them in real time and we have to do risk analysis and as part of our fiduciary responsibility as a board, where we want to provide, uh, opportunities and resources to students and families, but we also have to balance that with things that are in the best interest of the district, which makes, um, the process sometimes seem to lag. But I, I think we're all in uncharted territory. Um, hopefully, uh, students are getting re-engaged. Um, I would anticipate also, Superintendent, that there's going to be questions around what sort of technological platforms we're using and how do we effectively use those? How are we listening to, uh, students and teachers? And what are some of the, uh, legal ramifications that we also have to consider? And I think ultimately, what is the outcome? And I think that's where the board, um, probably the most important role that we're going to have to play in partnership with you is setting that expectation for, uh, student outcomes and then looking to you for your recommendations on the best way to get there.
We will deliver that.
Thank you. Uh, Director Leon, um, did that get at your interest? Did you have anything to add?
No, that was excellent. I just, we just want to make sure that the community knows that you have plans and you're planning. Um, and that we're still waiting for the guidance from the state. So as you said, not to get out in front of ourselves and have to retract things. Um, so I think the community has heard that now. Um, and maybe we can put some version of that, um, on the, on the website so people that aren't online can see that. Um, and when I got cut off earlier, I just wanted to, uh, echo that I support after, um, uh, President Hines' discussion around mentors and trying to make sure we have mentors, uh, for our high school students, if we can do that. And then the one point that's being talked about removing, um, expanded learning opportunities from one of our benchmarks. I say I caution around that and say that the, uh, internships and paid internships or unpaid internships are really important for our, our high school students to learn and then go off into their next step. So that's, uh, for more discussion next week too. Thanks, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Director Leon, that is not.
Director Leon, that is not a recommendation. The recommendation is to maintain the extended learning opportunities.
Oh, I thought it was crossed off as a removal. Okay, thanks. That's along with my misreading of the religion.
I think that the ELO is just going to be, I think it shifted to where it's going to be located in the plan, but it's not going away. Director Keating, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, my clarifying question, thanks, President Heinz. I heard President Heinz say pass, fail. And I was just asking, what I would like to hear is some clarification on language between, because I know there's a lot of language around pass, fail, credit, no credit. And could you just talk a little bit about what that means? Because I think that there might be some confusion within the community about the differences.
Dr. Garcia?
Yeah, so one important note is that distinction is, does the state make this decision? And by RCW, do they have the authority to make this decision, which they're interpreting they do? Or do they pass that along, that decision? And so the conversation then becomes is what kind of grading scale would we apply? Right now, we have a combination of all the above. We have certain students that take certain classes for pass, fail, or pass, no credit options. We have certain students that take classes, and there are certain classes that are only offered as pass, fail, or pass, no credit. So there's huge distinctions or diversity already in the system. And then we have students that take a more traditional 4.0 A through B, C, D, and F option in there. So the pass, fail versus the pass, no credit is if you, as a student, if you pass the class, you would get a traditional P and you would get credit, but it does not impact your GPA positively or negatively. The distinction between a fail and a no credit, neither one of them gives you credit, but your transcript is changed with a fail versus a no credit. And so it is a do-harm-in-a-fail option. Meaning if no credit, this just means that you didn't take the class in essence. It doesn't hurt you, doesn't help you. A failing remark would give you an indication that you failed the class. In this situation with COVID-19, our advocacy is that none of these decisions would be, have been made. Want to make this very clear. But our initial thinking is if no credit versus a fail, students haven't had a chance to complete all the work. And so to move more to a no credit, that is not to signal that we are not looking at letter grades. I want to be extremely explicit about that. We're looking for potential options of both, all the above. How do we retain some level of normalcy at that? And then how do we engage families in that choice and decision-making? With that said, I'll repeat what the superintendent said is we're like every other school district, waiting on some guidance that we have to get from the state. Either this is a local decision, or we are going to make this decision, and we have the statutory authority to do so. I checked the website as late as 5:35 today to look to see if there was any guidance yet, and they have not. And I want to be fair to everyone involved, this is extremely complex. And I appreciate the state taking its due diligence on even examining what are the possibilities and what are best for all students in the state of Washington during this situation. I hope that explains some of the nuances of pass, no credit.
Thank you very much.
And I would reiterate that there's been no formal decision made at the district level or at the state level. We're day four of this new learning expectation. So I think our best guidance to students and families is show up on a daily basis. Stay connected to your teachers through Microsoft Teams. Know that the board is listening to students, teachers, and families and considering a variety of ways that students can engage, that we're doing our due diligence on those policies that may need to be enhanced, be created or changed. And that we anticipate over the next several weeks, we will provide very definitive answers on these issues. But we have to stay in alignment with the State Board of Education. We have to meet the intent of OSPI and the governor's office. And as always, we have to do what we think is in the best interest of Tacoma Public Schools. And I would offer, I think we're in a more advantageous position than most districts because the transformation of this district has been because we've offered a variety of ways to be successful, that we haven't taken a single approach that applies to every student in a cookie cutter fashion, that we've tried to create policy and process and opportunities to meet students where they are and help them be successful. And I think the challenge for all of us right now is we have to do it remotely. No human contact, trying to use technological platforms that some of us may not have used before or have to use in different ways. And I think you're going to hear the board continue to work with the superintendent to ensure that we aren't just phoning it in, that we are every day trying to figure out how to meet students where they are and to individualize this learning experience as best we can and to learn as we go along, because we're all imperfect. We get some of these things right initially. We get some of these things wrong initially, but we're a continuous improvement district. We're always going to try to learn. And the inclusion of partnerships, I think that's the other piece that we're really starting to see emerge, is this outpouring of partners in the community that are willing to take on some of this workload to help students to be that resource, to be that family resource. Students are starting to engage with one another to work on homework and to try to continue the learning process. It's weird for all of us. It's uncomfortable. I think we're all going through highs and lows. But I'm excited because I think what we've done in Tacoma through the last several years will continue. We've created best practices. I think we'll figure out what a best practice is for distant learning. I don't think we're there yet. I think we're starting to see some of these pieces fall into place. And I know in talking with each of my colleagues individually, we've got our sleeves rolled up and we're ready to do the work. So I appreciate you all and your participation this evening. I know we had had the conversation, should we continue with the study session? Is it essential business? I would argue that this is evidence of essential business. I think we had a really important conversation tonight that's going to inform decisions we have to make next week. Vice President Cobb and I will be in an agenda-setting meeting with the superintendent tomorrow. And we are going to try to look out for the next several weeks to get these meetings and study sessions, business meetings and study sessions scheduled with input from board members on topics that are relevant. And we'll continue to meet virtually to do the work of the district. Superintendent, do you have anything else to add?
I'm good.
Deputy Superintendent?
No, thank you. Stay safe and healthy.
Board members, anything else for the good of the order?
I'm good, thanks.
All righty, everyone, thank you. Stay healthy, be well, and we'll see you soon. Take care. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you, everyone.